Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the October 9th, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, City Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse? Mayor Campana?
Here. Mayor Protem Stonehouse is absent. Would someone like to make a motion to excuse him with reason? Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I move that we excuse Mayor Protem Stonehouse due to lack—he's off-town on business.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Next, we come to the agenda which you have in front of you. Someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That also carries six zero. We come to announcements. First, I want to say that we are pleased to have with us tonight Boy Scouts are here with us. It is Troop 372. They are based at the crossroads at the Faith in Christ Church. We're happy to have them here. Hopefully, they can learn from us. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts tend to be honest, dependable, hard-working young men and women. And in fact, they probably turn out to be our future leaders. So, we welcome them here and we're happy to see them. Second announcement is that we have a concern. We have a water sewer and stormwater rate study report along with a comparable rate survey that'll be available on the city's website as of tomorrow. It's important that we look at this. We're going to be debating this and voting on it at our next meeting. So, we would like to have as many residents as possible be aware of what's going to be happening. Last thing I care to comment on is that boards and committees for the city, of which the city has 20 boards, committees, and authorities, and they are made up of resident volunteers. The committees exist to study and advise the city on areas of concern within the city. Couple such committees are the Board of Zoning Appeals and Harbor Advisory Committee. At this time, we have seven committees that contain 17 openings. So, there is a spot for everyone. We are regularly looking for residents who are willing to volunteer a few hours each month to help— to serve on these committees and to make Marquette a better place. It's an opportunity to do something productive, meet some good people, and help shape Marquette. If you'd like to step up and help, please contact any of the commissioners here, call the city manager's office, or go online. We depend on our residents to work for Marquette. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we're going to move to the first public comment of the evening. Public comment is a time when residents may address the commission, or if they want to speak on one of our business items on the upcoming— on this agenda, they can reserve time at this point. I'm going to open public comment. You have three minutes. We need name and address. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this time? Anyone?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Wismarquette, to speak on item three. These are my opinions. Heavy equipment tractor evident at the McCarty's Cove North Lysgard stand 10 feet from an unneeded cement piling at Marsar Beach. Reminders to remove it failed to reach public works such that multiple tasks could be completed on a single intrusion. We who use and know our beach as the best ought to influence how they're managed. September 24th, Mr. Stonehouse correctly said Marquette is the envy of other cities. My mission is to help keep it that way, realizing that we receive notoriety regardless of this board's irresponsibility. We thank our prior board's foresight to acquire and preserve our public shoreline and to Nature herself for bestowing us with such incredible beauty. Mr. Stonehouse misspoke, though, when he said one commission is only as good as those that preceded. That is, when considering the past 20 years. That's like saying a skyscraper should be built on a sand foundation. I agree with the compliments our manager received, except he's not better than the last three combined, as Mr. Stonehouse claimed. Even the manager would agree, as he was humble in admitting my comments about him were accurate. His personality was never questioned. In fact, the damage at South Beach occurred because he tried to please everyone but lost sight of the bigger picture. Of course, my positive remarks about him blew right by this board. They only heard the negative. Mr. Plord said this mayor told him privately that he favors closing comment, yet Mr. Plord sat here November 30, 2015, when Mr. Campana cast a lone nay vote. He also voted against closing comment the prior year and against reserving time for consent items, every chance he's gotten, as alleged before. Three votes speak more loudly than anything he told Mr. Plord in private. Maybe Mr. Plord told the truth, because Mr. Campana is easily impressionable. He judges based on whose idea it was. How Mr. Plord so forgot what he plainly witnessed here on multiple occasions is of great concern. One problem with smooth talkers is their unwillingness to listen. Mr. Plord needs to do his own homework by considering the history of the topics he rebuts. It's clear he's afraid to accept my offer to dissect his and my comments, word for word, to see who covers his bases versus who concocts baseless criticism. Stunning was Mr. Campana's assertion that we don't get a lot out of MML meetings, which Mr. Schlegel refuted. This bolsters my point that the chair doesn't absorb the world around him. His blatant September 10th, easily provable lie that I never served on a committee remains unapologized for. And what has that to do with any comment I've ever voiced? He discounted hundreds of my volunteer hours to our community. To use such a lie to misrepresent a foe is indicative of how this man acts.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. We would need a motion. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Okay, next we come to unfinished business, of which we have two items tonight. First item is the Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation, the concession lease agreement. City Clerk, could you please give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor Background. Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation, MJHC, has requested the city commission consider leasing the concession area of Lakeview Arena. MJHC operated the concession area during the 2017-18 ice season. Staff has worked with the city attorney and MJHC to draft the lease agreement. The agreement is six months, beginning October 1, 2018, through March 31, 2019. The monthly payment during operation shall be $720. It should be noted that there are specific hours which MJHC would have exclusive rights to concessions in the building. Outside of these hours, other arrangements with other entities are possible. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's September 24, 2018 meeting and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the October 9, 2018 meeting. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena Fund will receive $4,320 in revenue for fiscal year 2019. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation for concession space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the lease agreement with Marquette Junior Hockey Corporation for concession space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier? Comments, any? Commissioner?
No, the system has been working out and keep going with it.
Commissioner Frazier, anything?
I think it's great for Lakeview, great for their hockey kids.
We should just, yeah, be happy if somebody's going to take it over. Otherwise, it might be sitting empty, so it's a good thing.
Good thing.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Okay, second item under unfinished business is the purchase request for city-owned property, parcel 0510582. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor Background. Home Renewal Systems previously presented the city manager with an offer to purchase approximately 4.6 acres of city-owned property located at the northwest corner of Lake Shore Boulevard and US 41, commonly known as Parcel 2 of Founder's Landing. The city commission adopted a resolution of intent to sell, which directed the city manager to negotiate a sale of the property and bring back the sale to the commission for final approval. After several negotiation sessions with Homeland Renewal Systems, the terms presented in the attached purchase agreement provide a fair sale of property in terms agreeable to both parties, as well as the requirement for a subsequent development agreement that outlines the investment and responsibilities for each party to be signed at the time of sales closing. Fiscal effect, the city will realize a one-time revenue of $1.1 million, 100% of the appraised value of the property for the sale of the property. Recommendation, adopt the attached resolution of sale and direct the city manager to complete the sale. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Before we take this motion up, I would like to hear some more information from our city manager. We need to remember that we've been trying to sell this parcel, parcel number two, for many years, and we haven't received any legitimate offers until this one. HRS is offering us the full purchase price for this property. And also, we as a commission voted unanimously to try to sell this property at a prior meeting, and this may be our last good offer for a long time. City Manager, you want to fill in the rest?
Sure. Just a couple of facts I'd like to comment on prior to your next moves. Currently, the city still owes approximately $1.4 million on the Founder's Landing bond issue, which at the time, about 20 years ago, purchased that entire area. By selling this property for $1.1 million, my intent would be to cover the difference of the $1.1 and the $1.4, pay off that bond debt, and release about $288,000 for future use in the general fund, which I think is— which I know is very much needed for our future finances. As I commented earlier and presented to you earlier, this is part of an overall plan to replace lost revenue with the closing of the We Energy Plant. The freeing up of that bond payment for general fund use would be a huge movement—or a good move—in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, also—I would also like to mention that we have a representative from HRS, Jeff Katson, here tonight if we need—if he needs to answer any of our questions. First, Mr. Verito.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. Unbelievably, again, no decent—these are my opinions. Unbelievably, again, no decent depictions appear in our packet, only a small-scale utility diagram that does us little good. Upsetting is the fact that this board seems okay with the manager repeatedly not providing adequate depictions for our land use items. This board is blamed for perpetuating this problem by not instructing the manager to provide them. Depictions don't matter to this bunch because they decide based on who the proponents are, not according to how the finished product will appear, as we witnessed May 14th on this item, as well as on five Hartwood parcels and this architect's row of townhouses. May 14th, the architect was forthright in telling us that he plans to construct more three-story buildings, the maximum allowed by zoning. Mr. Plord and Schlegel motioned immediately after the architect's spiel disregarding public comment. The architect mentioned contamination below part of the parcel, thus he plans to put parking there instead of properly remediating the site, anything to maximize profit. He claims his condos will capture the feel of the neighborhood, which in the opinions of far too many, is not the case with his eyesores that block our view from US 41. How can we know when no renderings are provided of the exterior designs? Mr. Schlegel said he hopes they please the community, when we've heard such a degree of criticism almost over every building at Founder's to date. To put this in the hands of hope is foolish, based on what we've seen, instead of requiring the architect to adhere to conditions that protect the public from further blockages and eyesores. Mr. Frazier said the architect did a fine job on the orphanage, which has nothing to do with this. We like the orphanage because its exterior was restored. A more relevant comparison is how this proposal compares to the ugly row of townhouses. May 14th, Mr. Stonehouse said it will be a long process with time for public input, and sensitivity will be used when Parcel 2 is developed. Will hold him to his word, but based on what we've seen? He said that to get us through the moment. Holding members to their words won't hold up in court, and he knows that. If the buildings are three stories, they can't help but block yet more of our view. The absence of perspective drawings only heightens the suspicion. Mr. Frazier told us we can see the lake from Lake Shore Boulevard, which is a sore excuse for compromising our opportunity to have treated our citizens and visitors alike to the most outstanding entrance to almost any city in the United States. What a sin that in the 11th hour, this board discarded 12 years of careful planning, foresight, and public input to fulfill one man's dream, instead of implementing the collaborated effort of our community. The impact is evident, yet you vote his way every time. He may as well take over the mayoral seat. In truth, he'd do a better job.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and sale and direct the city manager to complete the sale with Home Renewal Systems.
Do we have a second? Mr. Schlegel? Commissioner Frazier, any comments?
I think it'd be good for the area. I mean, the city needs revenue to pay off a bond, and more construction is good for the area. I mean, it won't block anymore the view. The view is already blocked by trees, so it won't really affect that much, and it'd be good for anybody that wants to live down there.
Mr. Schlegel, anything?
Yeah, I'm going to go back to what I said previously, is that, you know, it's pretty obvious that the community's going to be watching this very closely, that we're going to hold our architect and their group to basically, you know, understand that the public has spoken, and they have been—and they will speak again, and this is just the first step in the process, the sale of the property. Again, Mr. Verito is kind of missing the process of how this whole thing goes from site plan review or submission of a site plan, the review by the planning commission, and then on down referrals to the commission as things proceed. And it's unfortunate, because it's only about the fifth time that we pointed it out, and it's still not part of his mindset. I hope he picks up on that. Excuse me? Almost done here, you can public comment later. Again, you know, you get down there, you get a lot of trees from the bike path that goes right along the lake. I honestly would like to see the trees getting removed, if there was a way to do that, without upsetting too many people, but really open that up so you can see the lake again. I'd really want to make sure that, you know, this process is adhered to in a proper manner, and that, you know, accountability is going to be held from the commission on down to the architecture. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to ask the developers some questions before the vote?
Absolutely.
Can I ask you to step up to the podium, please? Sure. I was just—I know that we talked about this in May. There would be condos that are in the mid-range. I know we talked about that dollar amount. Could you just state again what we're kind of thinking that those condos would sell for on the market?
I'm tired of saying right now. I need to do some market studies, but we do want to keep it affordable.
Affordable, okay. And that's something that I'm really hoping will hold true as this project continues.
That's our intent.
And then the other portion of the project is a Marriott Hotel, is that correct?
It's—I'm not sure what brand it's going to be at, but it is going to be a major hotel.
A major hotel chain.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a flag, it won't be an independent hotel.
Okay. And then something else that was interesting to me was what the tax revenue would be once the business is up and running, and I know that we're doing a little bit of research on that to see what that'll look like in the future. But I'm interested to see how that plays out, too, beyond this $1.1 million sale that'll help us now and in the future, because the debt will be paid off, hopefully.
As part of the development agreement, we will have those projections in there.
Great. That's just something I'm looking forward to as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I can ask you a quick question. You just sat down. Just, you know, people have to realize, as I said earlier, this is a piece of property we've been trying to sell for 20 years, have never gotten a decent offer on it. This is the first decent offer. It's by—you're company is very legitimate. You did good work at the orphanage, on the inside, obviously, and, you know, on schedule, on time, on budget, everything. So, we have a lot of faith in your company. And I'm assuming you're not going to build tarp paper shacks there, as someone earlier mentioned.
No.
You're going to build nice-looking, attractive, modern.
Absolutely.
I can't imagine it being anything but that. And, you know, it's—
We take pride in what we build, and we want to see that here in the future for many, many years, and we anticipate doing future projects as well, so we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize our future.
And I'm sure that's in the construction contract that you have, that'll be, you know—
For sure.
Well, it's—what's the word for it?
Development agreement?
No. No, we look forward to this. I think it's going to be a good project, and it's going to benefit Marquette in many ways. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we look forward to having your great project here.
Yes. It's a great area to have. I also would like to see—you can't see—you know, I just—I walked today, and you literally can't see the lake from the bike path. It'd be nice to get rid of some of the trees so that you could see the lake. I mean, that's why we live here, so thank you. Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one, it's not my intention as a commissioner—I'm not going to speak for the whole board, but I believe that most of the commissioners feel the same way. And it's not my intent to develop every open piece of property in the city of Marquette simply to wipe away debt. To reduce debt as much as possible is very, very important, and I am concerned about that. And I do want to work towards that. But there is such a thing as overdevelopment, and we're going to take—and I'm going to take a lot—you know, a lot of clear—a real clear look at what might be considered to be overdevelopment. I don't want that. That being said, this development project, I think, is a very good project, and like the mayor said, this is a parcel of land that's difficult to sell in the first place. It's a parcel of land that should be developed. And it is going to look good, it's going to pay us well. But another thing I want to point out is the whole Lake Shore is available to the public. And if you're not sure about that, take a look, go down to the Lake Shore. You can start right at One Market Place and walk right along the Lake Shore. And my question to some people that have expressed some dismay to me is, where would you not develop? And some people would say, "Well, you know what? Champion Street, we probably shouldn't have developed." Well, it has been for a long time. So, development is something that we need to do in a lot of ways to reduce that debt. It's very important that we do that. The other thing is, it's important to increase revenue to the city also. But in conversations with many people, as far as City Hall is concerned, I don't think anyone really wants to overdevelop the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, the only questions I really had Jenna asked—so, my only focus would be to Jenna's point of affordable housing. I think that's a constant problem we have in Marquette, so I hope that that stays true, because as this item has come up and people have talked to me about this item, they wanted to make sure that it's something that is actually for the regular working person. And like other commissioners have said, this is the first step of the process, and I'm glad that this is going to be—we're able to sell this piece of property finally.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
I think your company did a great job with Newer Systems, did a great job in restoring the old orphanage, so this would be another step of the process. Again, just the first step, sell the property, then you guys can look into how you want to develop it. I think it's good for it to be developed, because, I mean, people have commented they don't want it developed, but back when I was a kid, in these boys' code ages, it was just a railroad yard. And we're going down, there's a kid playing in the railroad yard, just pick up ore pellets and everything. It was abandoned years ago when the railroad stopped going through. So, I think rural lakefront houses would be good for the community, a good place to live, you know? Better than it was, just a railroad yard back in the day. So, I don't have a problem with it. And like, is it like—Commissioner Plord said, Lake Shore is undeveloped, all the way from the Ordoch to Ordock, all the way from Prescott, you know? If anybody wants to see the lake, just take a drive. Great.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is going to require a roll call. Volt City Clerk, could you please do that?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That passes six zero. Next, we come to new business. Four items. First item, Mayor Campana and Mayor Protem Stonehouse travel reimbursement. City Clerk, could we please have some background?
Thank you, Mayor Background. Mayor Dave Campana and Mayor Protem Fred Stonehouse attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Grand Rapids, September 19th through 22nd, 2018. The following checks will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Dave Campana, check 8091584. Mayor Protem Fred Stonehouse, check 80927132. Total travel cost—fiscal effect, total travel costs are $216. Adequate funds are available within the city within the fiscal year 2018 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Dave Campana in the amount of $84, and Mayor Protem Fred Stonehouse in the amount of $132 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse is not here to vote, and I will abstain on this vote. Would there be a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve travel reimbursement for Mayor Dave Campana in the amount of $84, and Mayor Protem Fred Stonehouse in the amount of $132 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Thank you. Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Discussion? None? None? Seeing none?
No discussion.
Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
That passes five to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Next, we move to Commissioner Schlegel and Commissioner Frazier, travel reimbursement. City Clerk, could we have that one, please?
Thank you, sir. Background, Commissioner Paul Schlegel and Commissioner Pete Frazier attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Convention held in Grand Rapids, September 19th through 22nd, 2018. The following checks will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Paul Schlegel, check number 80972578 and 18 cents. Commissioner Pete Frazier, check 80973624 and 18 cents. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $1,202 and 36 cents. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2018 city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Schlegel in the amount of $578 and 18 cents, and Commissioner Frazier in the amount of $624 and 18 cents for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. I would ask that Commissioner Schlegel and Commissioner Frazier abstain from this vote. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Schlegel in the amount of $578 and 18 cents, and Commissioner Frazier in the amount of $624 and 18 cents for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds? Do we have any discussion? The reason for their amounts, their totals, is that they each took their own car. The reason for their amounts, their totals, is that they each took their own car, and that becomes an expensive expense, traveling that distance, but that's wear and tear on a car, it's not just gas, it's wear and tear, tires, motor, everything, so that would be why. Okay, all in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries four to zero with two abstentions. Our next item is the Community Master Plan Update, City Clerk, would you please give us some background?
Thank you, Mayor, background, on Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, the Planning Commission passed a motion to recommend that an amendment of the Community Master Plan be examined by the City Commission, this update to the Community Master Plan includes a new narrative chapter, Appendix J, an updated future land use map, and proposed zoning map, as well as minor amendments to Chapter Two and the Acknowledgement Section of CMP, recommended action, the City Commission should review the included CMP materials and take action to recommend the distribution of these materials for a public comment period of 40 days, if approved for distribution, the City Planner will initiate a public comment period of October 12th through November 20th, 2018, during which time the public as well as certain local units of government and agencies of concern that have been notified of the intent to amend the CMP will have an opportunity to provide comments on the CMP amending, amendment to the Planning Commission, at this time, the City Commission may also take action to adopt a resolution asserting the right to reject or adopt the CMP amendment after the comment period ends, and after the Planning Commission holds a hearing to adopt the CMP amendment, fiscal effect, none, recommendation, approve the distribution of the Community Master Plan Amendment for local government jurisdictions and public comment, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, would someone care to make a motion, Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the distribution of the Community Master Plan Amendment for local government jurisdictions and public comment.
Would someone care to second that?
Do we have the adoption of the resolution as part of that motion?
Did he not say it?
I'm sorry.
He's gonna restate it.
Thank you. Make the motion to approve the distribution of the Community Master Plan Amendment for local government jurisdictions and public comment, and to adopt the attached resolution, thanks.
So there's second, Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Mr. Schlegel?
You know, coming from, I'm gonna beat this into everybody's head over time, but coming from the Planning Commission and knowing of the work that went into this, the master plan revision a few years back, to see things like this occur where it's a living, breathing document, and it's being revised and changed to suit the times, which wasn't done for a number, many years, more than it should have been, honestly, it's really exciting for me, because that means that when we sat there at the end of that adoption of the master plan, and said that we want this to be living and breathing so that it is able to change with times, it just didn't, it didn't go away, it's on, it's on the radar all the time, there are always items that are coming up to be considered, and this is the way it should be, so that it doesn't fall behind the times, and that we're keeping it current, and what's best for the community, so I'm really happy to see that this has been part of the process.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
Commissioner Schlegel spoke that perfectly.
Commissioner Plourd?
I think something else that should be said, we as a full commission met with the Planning Commission at Lakeview Arena, and also Mr. Dave Stensis was there along with the city manager, we met last Thursday, and we've got an early look at this, and I wanna commend the Planning Commission, they did a lot of work, they rolled up their sleeves and they buckled down and they went to work, this document is 394 pages long, and there's some exciting changes in it, there's some zoning changes that are very, very interesting, a lot of different changes, and as Commissioner Schlegel mentioned, it's, they brought it, it's a living document, and they brought it into, I think, the 21st century, and they did a lot of work on it, I really urge you, as a member of the public, in whatever capacity you are, or whatever capacity of interest you may have, to look at this document, it's gonna be available on the city website and available in many different areas and ways, look at this document, take a look at it, and let us know what you think, and that means for, against, maybe whatever, we like it, we don't like it, however you wanna express it, we really are, as a commission, asking for your comments on this document, so what we're doing here is putting it out for public review, and we're asking that you do that, thank you.
Thank you. Comments, anybody? I would just like to thank the Planning Department and the Planning Commission for, it's been over a year that they've been working on this, very difficult piece of work, but they managed to get it done, and we're very happy for that, you know, it updates, it streamlines our current ordinances and zoning, hopefully to make it more user friendly for the community, and people that need to use it. Seeing no further comment, I believe it's a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plourd?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries six zero. We now move to our last new business item of the evening, which is a purchase request for city-owned property, a portion of parcel 0240010, and would the City Clerk, please give us some background?
Thank you, Mayor, background, the city received a request from Carl Newmanin to purchase a portion of parcel 0240010, Mr. Newmanin purchased the adjacent depot property, building property at 201 South Fifth Street, and later discovered a property description error, Mr. Newmanin would like to purchase the southern tip of the property 25 feet by 175 feet, as shown in the attached map, to correct the error, the attached letter indicates Mr. Newmanin's request was for a larger portion of the property, however, the city has reserved a portion as needed for stormwater management in this area, fiscal effect, the city would realize $4,125, which payment is based on the cost of an appraisal and per square foot value based on the appraisal report, recommendation, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to direct the sale of the property in accordance with the city code, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Would a commissioner care to make a motion, Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to direct the sale of property in accordance with the city code.
Would there be a second, Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any comments, Commissioner Reynolds?
No, it's pretty basic to change the legal, we're trying to fix the legal problem in the description that's, that he actually purchased this property and then realized the legal description was wrong, I've had a conversation with Mr. Newmanin to this effect, and I'm excited that once this gets taken care of, there's, the depot can actually start getting going, and we can have a new place in town, so.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Frazier, anything?
Great for the city to work all the little details, and be great for the community to have another place to hang out.
Thank you, further comments, anywhere? Seeing none, roll call?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plourd?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries six zero. We now come to our last public comment of the evening, again, a time when residents may address the commission, you've got three minutes, we need your name and address, we're gonna open public comment, would anyone care to comment?
Good evening, Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, before I get into the matter, I came up here to talk to, I wanna let the Boy Scouts know how lucky they live in the year 2018, when, because when I was their age, the big field trip in Marquette was to the Bunny Bread Bakery, the post office, and if you were really lucky, you got to go to the Fish Hatchery, so the fact that the adults in the community have encouraged you guys to come here is a big plus, and I would encourage you to keep coming and paying attention, because this doesn't go away, no matter what your age is, and by the way, for the Bunny Bread trip, our driver got donuts, we did not. Okay, I'm here today to share with everyone what I just recently learned, if you see a spill in any body of water, something that doesn't look normal, something that looks oily, something that looks like a chemical, something that wasn't there the day before, and you wonder what it's all about, and you don't know who to call, and you don't know what to do, there's a National Response Center 800 number that the Coast Guard has set up for any type of aquatic issue in the United States, and I learned this last Friday night when I was taking my dog for the last walk of the night, and I saw a whole bunch of oily sheen on the water remaining in the hot pond, and we walked there five, six times a week, and it wasn't there the day before, and I'm a chemical engineer by training, I couldn't tell you what type of oil it was, but I knew it was there, and I didn't know what to do, it's Friday night, do I call the police, whatever, so I ended up calling the Coast Guard and was referred to this National Response Center, which is an 800 number, which I called, and the person there took down all the information, an hour later, a specialist with the National Response Center called, they were trying to determine if it was navigable waterway or non-navigable waterway, and then that person told me I'd be contacted with further. The next morning, 8 o'clock, the DEQ from Lansing woke me up asking for more information, and an hour and 15 minutes later, there was a DEQ specialist onsite at our hot pond in Marquette evaluating what I'd seen in the water, now his opinion was that it was natural oil decay caused about by plant putrification, I'm fine with that, I'm glad it wasn't an oil spill, but I'm also glad that I made an official report on it, because it got a ticket number, and now they know that that phenomena occurred, I'm also glad that I was able to tell the city manager that somebody was looking into this, because I know from past experience, if anything happens in town, his office gets the first call, so if you see something in the water that you didn't see the day before, and you have concern, call the National Response Center for the Coast Guard, the number's online, or you can call the Coast Guard Marquette, they'll give you the number, and make the report, and make it stick, so that it's not just you and a bunch of people on Facebook speculating as to what it is, and that it becomes official, and that's my comment for this evening, good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Cheverito, these are my opinions, September 24th, Mr. Plourd accused me of lying by omission regarding the Hartwood news poll question that read, should portions of the Hartwood Forest be developed as commercial, retail, or residential space, he fails to realize that in this very dynamic environment, we haven't time to repeat the background information at each meeting, August 13th, I reported, quote, of the 389 responses, 21% chose yes, and a whopping 79% responded no, even if 389 isn't the largest sample size, and we don't know what percentage was local, the result speaks volumes, that the great majority think more along my lines concerning the preservation of our natural spaces, end quote, nowhere was there any effort to deceive the audience, Mr. Plourd wants me to mention the TV station, if the results were verified, and the plus and minus, I won't mention the TV station, except it's the only one with a nightly question, everyone knows there's likely a variance, I'm not expected to furnish non-existing information to an intelligent audience who considers our comments for what they are, when first mentioning the 79%, I reported the small sample size, and later used the word roughly, I do admit riding with the 79% when I felt the opposition is lower, but right now, that's all we have to go on, 2/3 is a better estimate, however, this also constitutes a clear majority, in fact, 79% is a majority by a huge 29%, also, only one entry was registered per phone number, unless the pollster erred, 389 reflects a clear majority, we have no better data, because this board neglected to conduct the planned and requested survey before so carelessly disposing of five Hartwood parcels against the wishes of our public majority, and without furnishing depictions that were requested ahead of the vote, my opinion remains unchanged, in fact, this board rushes most items similarly, our attorney, who reviewed the amendment for fireworks, is bright, but he's only one person who I don't feel foresaw every possible angle, the wording doesn't seem to account for all the concerns that at least six of us raised, wind ought to be mentioned in the amendment, but again, this board ignored us all, and as usual, chose not to delay or tweak the ordinance to assure its comprehensiveness, our members are too bent on disposing of items, Mr. Plourd's criticism is characteristic of someone who runs his words without absorbing our comments or doing his homework, he keeps giving me homework assignments when he's elected to serve us, I'm not perfect, but to my knowledge, I've never criticized anyone unduly, to date, no one's answered my call to tell me if they or anyone they know has been treated unfairly, that is, without having been checkmated at a subsequent meeting, this offer remains open into perpetuity.
Hello, I'm Jen Hill, I'm at 503 Craig Street, I have two questions about upcoming opportunities for the public to comment on, particularly on the master plan and the zoning, is it, has that date been set for October 23rd, can that, or is? Okay, and then, I also heard, so, I encourage folks, I don't know where to look, but who are watching and hear that there is gonna be an open house, it's most likely gonna happen before the next city council, city commission meeting, so I just wanted to, if you are really interested in this, there's gonna be an opportunity for a public meeting and open house, and last I heard, it was October 23rd, but check the city's website, marquetmi.gov, and then the other one is the recreation survey, no, John left, does anyone, Dave, do you know what the recreation survey, the results?
Could answer your questions about the other thing, but not.
Oh, okay, well, has the date been set for the, or can you say?
Yes, October 23rd, we'll have an open house, and I'm looking for the venue, probably the Ed Citizens Forum.
Okay, and folks might have gotten in the mail a survey about recreation priorities for the community, and there's gonna be a presentation on the results of that, that I think are gonna be really important in helping set the priorities for where we spend our funds on recreation, and watch for that as well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address us? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment, we're gonna move to comments from the commission, we'll start with Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, I didn't have any comments for this evening, but I just have two now, one, I'm glad all of you Boy Scouts could come, it was actually quite a short meeting, somebody who probably didn't feel that way from your side, but this is pretty short for us, so, I'm glad you guys could all come, I did Girl Scouts for 18 years, so I understand the importance of what y'all are doing, and my only other comment, and strangely enough, I'm going to comment to Mr. Verito, and I never do, as you said, treating people unfairly, on four different occasions, you can go ahead and jot this down for your, for your notes, Mr. Vita's wife, Mr. Campana's wife, the two cashiers that I've seen you in Valleys and in Super One, all unfairly, rude and mean, so, it's not just us, and we're public officials, that's our job, yell at us all you want, I don't care, but the way you treat some of the normal public is also unfair.
Commissioner Port?
Thank you, Your Honor, just a couple things to Mr. Verito, seems like you got all the attention tonight, how about that, it's exactly what you wanted, I have a question, yes, I am going to give you homework, and first, I have a question I want you to define in the next meeting, what exactly is such a degree of criticism, it's a comment you made today that the city commission got from you, we had such a degree of criticism about selling land or whatever, also, I want you to explain to the commission and to the viewers whether or not you actually speak for everyone, and if not, exactly who do you speak for? Because you represent yourself as speaking for everyone at every public comment, also, I'd like to know, what is this quote collaborative effort that you just spoke of in public comment? Please define that for us, thirdly, you did answer my question about the poll you used, but it is an unscientific poll, and you did lie through misrepresentation, you said you used in two different occasions that poll to represent the whole city, virtually the county of Marquette, in fact, you did it again tonight, I correct myself, three different occasions, that you used that poll to act like the whole city is saying something when it's just a certain amount of people, please, please define that and explain that as well, beyond that, again, I'd like to thank the Boy Scouts for being here, yep, it's, it is, this is democracy in action, and no, we don't always get along, but we do speak our mind, and that's what's important, that's what America's about, also want to thank local law enforcement and local fire departments for the static display that they put on last Saturday, always a lot of fun, Chief Rebold and his finest are always available to talk about- Always a lot of fun. Chief Rebold and his finest are always available to talk about issues with the police department, and the fire department is there, their equipment is there, they explain the equipment. And we have some outstanding employees in both departments. We're very, very fortunate for that. And thanks for, to everybody who came out. The weather was not the best. I would have been there, but I had to work on Saturday as it was, so, but I think it was a lot of fun. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Just wanted to say welcome to the Boy Scouts that came to the meeting tonight. We had a little question and answer session before the meeting tonight. They got to tour the police department, and I hope that it was a good experience for you. If you have any questions afterwards, I'm happy to help with that as well. I think that Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are some of the best future leaders that we're gonna have in our community. So, I urge you to see how you can help out your fellow scouts, classmates, maybe friends, and continue that on as you grow and learn as individuals. Couple other things. Next meeting, we've got the big decision on water, stormwater, and sewer rates. So, I would just urge the public to educate themselves, and please reach out to us with your comments and questions about that before that vote happens at the, I believe, the next meeting, unless that changes for some reason. This week is Fire Prevention Week, and I know our fire department has been working on that. On Saturday, they held an event with all the different fire departments in the local area over at Harlow Park, and I attended that with my two-year-old daughter. She was terrified to get on the fire trucks, but it was still a great event. She talked about it the whole way there, and then wouldn't touch them once we got there, but that's how it goes. So, thank you to the fire departments for putting that on. And then, lastly, on a personal note, I noticed, I got in the mail a notice about brush pickup and leaves. It's that time of year, and I noticed one change. I just wanted to say, in case people didn't notice, it's paper bags only for leaves this year, no plastic bags. So, if you put a plastic bag of leaves out, they will not pick that up anymore. It's right on the form, but not everyone always reads all those. I just wanted to say that now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Again, good to have the Boy Scouts here. I was a Boy Scout too at one time. Our police chief is still a Boy Scout. And we're all, we all were Boy Scouts at one time or another. We're Girl Scouts. We've all been to Scouts at one time. And it's good you came here to, and don't forget, the public doesn't really hate us as much as some of the people in the audience like to comment. He's commented for twenty years about what we've done wrong, and how this board, this board, this board. Most people don't mind us, and they've got a comment. We can take the comments. And as far as his comments about Lake Shore, he's got a perfectly nice view. He's got a better view of me. And he comments about Founder's Landing, about his view, their view being blocked. But he doesn't ever go over Founder's Landing. I mean, that's a whole different side of town. He's got a perfectly good view. The way his view would be blocked is if they built the skyscraper in Matson Park, which was, again, just an old wardoc. And Founder's Landing was a road yard when I was your kid, so. I mean, railroad, I mean, field trips are not that exciting, much more exciting than coming to a city meeting. It can feel bad for your kids having to come to a city, but I know you got your badge out of this, but feel bad having to come to a city meeting. That's something I would have wanted to do when I was your age. But again, good for everybody, good, and good job, and we'll talk to everybody later.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel.
Good to see you, Scouts, again. Who's the scout leaders here? Thank you. Thank you for being mentors to these great kids. Thank you. The static display for Fire Prevention Week was fabulous. Great to see, for me, I think, as much as it's great to see the city of Marquette and all its splendor with their trucks and stuff, it's all the volunteer people that are out there throughout the county. They're awesome. Got to speak with a number of them, and I just, you know, I'm not gonna run into a burning building unless I absolutely have to. These guys are gonna do it at the drop of a hat, and it's just, it's really something to, to show your appreciation for all the work that they do. So, that was a lot of fun. Two other things, real quick. I'd like to thank, I think it's Keith Whittington from our engineering department, the city engineer from City Marquette, for orchestrating the leveling of the manhole covers on Wright Street. If anybody's been down there in the last two weeks, you had a little bit of zig and a zag there for a while. But whoever did it, I'll buy you a cold one. I can't thank you enough. And it really, it really makes a humongous difference with the amount of truck traffic that's going down there, whether that's part of the plan with the mine and the monies that we receive from them, or if it's part of the city's improvements for the infrastructure. Whoever was part of that, thank you so much. That was great. And we got a phone call today from a gentleman regarding Lake Shore Boulevard, and his concern for pedestrian foot safety, foot traffic safety. Just because it's not summer, you know, specifically, I think it was at Hewitt and Lake Shore, his concern, he lives not too far from there. All summer long, it's been a battle between traffic and pedestrian there. Don't, don't, don't forget about looking out for the kids and the dog walkers and everybody that are utilizing that shoreline that we can see. If that's been a topic at all tonight or not, but it's one of the access points there. Utilize it. Be careful walking across the streets and watch for the cars. That's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. One last credit for the Boy Scouts. We're glad you're here tonight. I'm mostly impressed you're able to sit still for an hour. I'm sure you're ready to go, and you'll be glad to know this is one of our shorter meetings, so. It could, could have been worse. Scouting is a really good thing, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I encourage you guys to stay with it. Are you listening now? Stay with it. It's really easy. It's really easy to drop out, but you don't want to do that because it really looks good for your background, for your resume. When it comes time to get into college or to get a job, people look at that, and the fact that you continued to be in Boy Scouts is a very good thing. You will get the job ahead of somebody else because you are a Boy Scout, Girl Scout. So, stick with it. Tonight, we sold parcel two, and that's, that's a huge thing for the city. It's off the books. We got money. We're gonna reduce our debt. This doesn't happen very often, and I wish we had more land to sell, but we only have a few pieces left. But this was a very big thing for the city. I hope you realize that. Lastly, our next meeting, this is one of those five Monday months, so, three weeks from now, on the twenty-ninth, will be our next meeting. If you show up in two weeks, it'll be a short one for you, so. Okay, City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you all for your support tonight. The property sale was very important to us, I think, in the administration. And on that note, it is our intent to bring forward on the twenty-ninth the sale of parcel twelve and thirty-five in the Hartwood property. Everything is still good there. All parties involved are still on the same page. So, we hope to have it together. We should have it together by that meeting. I don't see why twelve for sure and thirty-five is probable, so. And then, last comment, my community office hours are Wednesday, this Wednesday, the tenth, at ten o'clock AM at the Peter White Public Library, if you'd like to pay me a visit, so. Thank you.
We are adjourned.